Everybody. You ready to go? Are people inside? Great. So, good afternoon, everybody. Thank you for joining us. My name is Brian Nussenberg, Managing Deputy Commissioner for the Department of Housing's Affordable Housing Programs. I want to thank all of you for coming and joining us in our public comment period for the new QAP. I really want to send a special thank you to you that are joining us and continue giving us new words and guidance that we can help think about how to make this more transparent and public. Special thanks to our multifamily team, public policy team, and our Sresi team for helping us get this far. These are some really incredible changes that we're very proud of. And really, what we're going to do today is just go through a brief review of some of those changes. We'll pass it on to a couple of our staff. And so, a special thank you to Tamara Collins, Esther Sorrell, Matt Stern, and AJ Bonner for highlighting some of the changes in the work that they're doing. And really, before we get started, pass it on to the Commissioner for a brief opening remarks. So again, we'll spend the day reviewing the changes and then we'll go through and listen, hear from you, your public comment, and then kind of wrap it up for the afternoon session. Thank you. Commissioner.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thanks, Brian. Really glad to be here with all of you. Really glad to be at this point that we're in the middle of our public comment period, which wraps up at the end of the month. And looking forward to hearing from all of you and seeing if there is input and feedback that we will need to incorporate before we issue a final. You'll hear more from our team. I just wanted to take a moment to ground everyone in the vision of our department and really just explain that that's where all of the things you'll hear about are coming from. So, our vision as a department is the equitable distribution of resources across all 77 community areas, so that every Chicagoan can choose and remain in quality housing that is affordable, safe, and healthy. That's how we're making decisions. That's how you'll see different tracks laid out in the plan are all to get at that goal. And so, without further ado, I will turn it over to our team that will highlight a couple of specific things. We assume you've all looked at it at this point and are really coming armed with your questions, but we'll just give you the briefest of overviews and then jump in. Thank you.
Really quickly, just to orient ourselves to the space, just wanted to point out a few Zoom accessibility features. So, my name is Natasha Hamilton. I'm the Managing Deputy Commissioner for Community Engagement, Racial Equity, and Strategic Initiative. If you need closed captioning, please note the CC button that is available there that will allow you to see the transcript at the bottom of your screen. If you need interpretation in Spanish, please select the globe button and select Spanish, so that you'll be able to hear what is being shared in Spanish language. Also, when it comes to the public comment moment, you'll have the opportunity to ask questions or not ask questions, but share feedback. Use the raise hand feature for that. And then, we just want to point out for accessibility features, the ASL interpreters will be the only folks who are spotlighted for the purpose of accessibility. So, just wanted to share that for you and we can continue now. Thank you so much. Also, just to share a few more important notes. So, again, use the raise hand feature to speak. Limits for public comment will be two minutes. Please remember to remain muted when you're not speaking. If you do not wish to add a verbal comment, please make sure to enter that comment into the chat. Or you're able to write written comments to the DOH 2023 QAP at cityofchicago.org website. Thank you.
We can move to the next slide. So, Esther Sorrell, talk about the prioritizing the QAP responses.
Good afternoon. Hi, I'm Esther Sorrell, Assistant Commissioner in the Housing Finance Division. I'd like to talk about prioritizing our QAP responses as you are thinking about preparing your applications. There's going to be five tracks. Four of them you have seen in previous iterations of the QAP. That's going to be our preservation track, our opportunity area track, and our transitioning track. You'll also see a permanent supportive housing that's new for 2023. And we're also going to be looking for responses to specific areas. The 18th and Peoria area in Pilsen, Lake Edgedsey in East Garfield, and the 63rd Street corridor in Woodlot. So, we're definitely looking forward to your applications. I'll speak briefly about the preservation track. The preservation track is back and we're very proud of it. We've received about a third of the applications of the previous round for the preservation track. And this track focuses on the preservation of existing projects that have DOH or other affordable housing financing investment. This creation of this track allowed for the recapitalization of over 1,000 units in the last funding round. Our new goals for this year are the resiliency, sustainability, and decarbonization of existing affordable housing that has city investment. We're prioritizing tenant outcomes, and we're also looking for 5% set aside for permanent supportive housing units, which will be discussed later on. So, thank you very much. I'll turn it over to Ryan Billetary, who's going to talk about permanent supportive housing.
Hey, everyone. My name is Ryan Billetary, and I'm a project coordinator at the Department of Housing. I'm going to quickly go over our permanent supportive housing tract, which is new, as Esther mentioned. Some of the important features of this tract include that we're expanding the definitions of homelessness by including set asides for some specific populations, including doubled up fraternity residents and gender-based violence. We're also focusing on supportive services through a tiered system, exploring what support might be needed onsite. We're also, well, to do that, we're incentivizing developers by increasing the developer fee by 5% if it goes towards those supportive services. We are also expanding our understanding of the needs of residents by establishing a standard within permanent supportive housing to utilize trauma-informed design principles, recognizing that individuals who have experienced trauma need to feel safe in their homes, and that can be found in the ATSM. We're also establishing tenant selection guidelines, which you can find in the QAP, which I hope you've reviewed, that allow for easier lease-up processes and that reduce administrative barriers for tenants being selected for PSH developments. And allow for the priority populations that I mentioned to be effectively served. And finally, we're establishing a PSH set aside, as Esther mentioned, at 5% across all developments. And I will pass it on, I think, to Matt.
Thanks. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm going to talk just for a minute about our new climate action and sustainability elements in the QAP in alignment with the city's climate action plan, which was published last year, as well as seeking to take advantage of a wide variety of new federal policies with new subsidies and tax breaks for sustainable and green building technologies. This year, DOH's Architectural Technical Standards Manual and QAP both include a number of changes related to sustainability and green building. Just to briefly introduce them, there's three categories of changes you can expect to see in the draft materials this year. First, the new draft ATSM includes a variety of new baseline requirements for energy-efficient buildings that also limit the combustion of fuel for heating and other utility needs in the building. Second, you can expect a small handful of new questions in our multifamily assistance application this year to ask some specific questions about site-specific vulnerabilities, like flooding and extreme heat. And then, third, the draft QAP includes a new preference for exceeding baseline green building requirements in creative ways that are both equitable and cost-effective. And I will leave it at that. Thank you so much.
All right. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Asia Bonner. I'm a project manager at DOH and member of the city's Interagency Equitable Transit Oriented Development Working Group. And so, these next two initiatives covered in the next two slides are more focused on expanding priorities that we established in the 2021 QAP and is born out of DOH's commitment to centering the needs of tenants. So, taking these two apart, the first one we see in this slide here is a reference to updates we've made around E Todd policies, and this was done in coordination with the recent passage of the Connected Communities Ordinance. So, you'll see in the QAP additional language that reinforces what's identified in the ordinance around an expanded radius of applicable geographies, expanded eligible bus routes, an additional incentive for ground floor accessible units, and the elimination of mandatory parking minimums for affordable projects near transit. And so, another, I'm sorry, just before we advance to talk about broadband, I did want to also mention the QAP highlights a new initiative we're launching around encouraging developers to provide a transit or divvy subsidy to tenants. And so, more will be spelled out in our application instructions, but you can find language about it in the QAP. Now, turning to our broadband expansion. So, in the 2021 QAP, we established a requirement for every unit to be outfitted with infrastructure that enabled broadband service. And now, with 2023's QAP, we're looking to encourage developers to provide the actual broadband service to tenants at no or low cost. To support this, we will allow this to be a part of your operating expenses. And so, that's information that's also captured in this new QAP. I'll leave it there and turn it over to, I believe, Tamara next.
Thank you, Asia. And good afternoon, everyone. I'm Tamara Collins, Deputy Commissioner for the Bureau of Housing Development. So, this QAP builds off of what we started in 2021 with preferences for BIPOC developments to include a portion, and we made some changes to help those developers along the way. One of the changes we made was to include a portion of consultant fees in the funding stack versus those developers having to pay for it out of their developer fee. That can be as much as 10% of their developer fee. And so, we thought, given the discussions that we've had with developers, that this would be a way to help boost their bottom line. Also, allowing a portion of contingency to cover errors and omissions. If you were in the IHC meetings either February 3rd or February 6th, these things were discussed by our construction and compliance team. Historically, we had not allowed for errors and omissions to be covered by contingency, and the ATS will discuss more clearly how that would be utilized, as well as how bid forms would be utilized in the upcoming QAP. We have partners from CAC in-house here today with us to discuss those. Should there be any comments or questions or feedback that you needed to provide regarding that? What's the next slide? So, I won't go through all the details, but obviously, the QAP has already been released. It's in draft form. We are doing our public comment period now, which will close on the 28th. And then, the goal is to have the final QAP posted the week of April 3rd. And then, I expressed how you're able to submit your applications. So, the funding round will be open from June 5th to July 7th. We assume that's plenty of time, given that by the time the round opens, the QAP itself will have been out for about almost six months, and people will have had an opportunity to really absorb what we're trying to do and put together a good application. Our intake process will still be open until the funding round opens June 5th. After June 5th, we will not be doing intake meetings for developers who are going to be applying to the funding round. But if you want a meeting regarding your project prior to that, we're happy to meet with you before then. And then, we just sort of outline the ways in which you could submit your application, which will be part of our application information, so that all this information will be in the application. And then, review and selection will happen between July and November, depending on the number of applications, with what we hope are announcements in December of 2023. I think this concludes our overview, and at this point, we will open up for comments or feedback on the QAP as you reviewed it. Thank you.
So, again, just to reiterate, the chat feature is turned off. We are capturing questions and comments featured via the Q and A function. So, if you prefer to stay muted and submit your comment, please be sure to use the Q and A feature.
Hey, I see Moses Moreno has their hand up. You're now able to unmute.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Moises Moreno, Executive Director of the Pils Alliance. Want to thank folks for putting this public comment section together in the QAP. As a 25th ward stakeholder participant, I represent members and constituents of my community. And over the past year, we've been in direct conversations with Pilsen residents and allies on how we could best support affordable housing at 18th and Peoria from our community surveys, community meetings, including our own vision framework. We've heard from residents saying that we all want 100% affordable housing at 18th and Peoria. As such, what we like to say, what I like to say is that we like this QAP to reflect the opportunity and the need to utilize all possible funding, low-income housing tax credit funds, all possible funds to support this vision of 100% affordable housing at 18th and Peoria. Hopefully, we could do set aside for family-sized housing and homeowner cooperatives. What we do not want is funding being used for luxury housing and market rates and absolutely no townhomes. And last but not least, we like to say that we like to see this QAP could plan to support a social housing pilot program at 18th and Peoria, which could potentially serve as a new model for housing, especially in communities like Pilsen that are facing gentrification and displacement. We like to see, again, the QAP reflect the possibility of putting this land in a land trust, make sure that the community oversees this land. So, that's pretty much what I like to say in a nutshell. We just hope that this QAP could reflect that, the need and the vision for that. So, thank you very much. I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Thank you, Moises. So, as members of DOH, we're really looking for your feedback on the QAP and the Architectural Standards Manual. I see we have quite a few participants on the line. I know probably a lot of people joined the IHC meetings, but if you did not, this is really your opportunity to share with us your feedback on what we are proposing with this 2023 QAP.
So, Liz Peterson has a question in the chat. Will full set of technical and underwriting guidelines be published on April 3rd as well?
Yes.
Great. I have Tracy up next. Tracy, you're now allowed to speak, so feel free to unmute yourself for your comment.
Okay. Good afternoon, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. How's everybody doing? So, basically, before July, I believe 7th, you're going to go down and and fill out an application.
I'm sorry, Tracy. Could you repeat your question?
Okay, I'm sorry. Do you still hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, yes. I wanted more information about the application process before July 7th. What is that basically detailed? I kind of missing things.
So, the city has posted its draft qualified allocation plan, which is what we use to determine how we finance projects and how we basically determine which project can be funded. That is already posted in draft form on the city's website. It will be based after the public comment period closes on February 28th, we will post the final QAP the week of April 3rd. Between that time and the time that the application period opens on June 5th, developers can continue to review and put their applications together. They can meet with us to talk about their proposals. And between June 5th and July 7th, anytime between that period, they can submit an application to us for funding or review.
Oh, great, great. So, basically, I'm just submitting my proposal to you guys.
Correct.
Oh, great. Okay, got it.
And that deadline is July 7th.
It's July 7th. Okay, great.
Thank you, Tracy. I'm reading a comment from the Q and A from David Esposito. Step two of the tenant screen slash credit report section that it describes or outlines a background screening policy that aligns with housing for small.
Okay, I see Maria's hand is up. Maria, I'm going to let you speak now, so feel free to unmute yourself.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. My name is Maria. I'm with Elevate Energy, a local nonprofit in Chicago that provides energy efficiency services. I wanted to ask just a quick question on the new requirement as part of the Architectural Technical Standards to also include, in addition to the physical needs assessment, which has been a requirement for many years, this year, you're now requiring an ASHRAE energy audit level two minimum. And you know, we're, as energy professionals, we know what those are, but we also know that they're very cost-intensive and laborious. As a nonprofit, we offer these, and they can cost anywhere between $20,000 to $40,000 per building, depending on the building type. And we're just kind of concerned on the affordability side of things. Can you just share or provide more context on why you're requiring this type of, you know, intense level of audit and maybe any resources for energy professionals like us that can follow to make sure that folks are meeting this requirement?
Thank you. I will note that in addition to the ASHRAE standard, there's also an ISO standard that does qualify. Chris, did you just come off mute? I'm hoping you can address this.
Thanks, Matt. Actually, could you repeat the question, please? I don't think I got it all.
Yeah, no problem, Chris. My question is, if you can provide more context as to why an ASHRAE level two or the ISO 5002 is required to meet the Architectural Technical Standards now? I guess the comment is that ASHRAE energy audit level twos are super intense and are, for the most part, very cost prohibitive. So, curious why this is a new requirement, and instead of just, you know, something that is more qualitative, like provide, you know, or reduce energy by 20%. I'm not sure exactly what, but just something that's a little bit more flexible and not as costly to building owners.
I understand. Okay. I think it's involved with the technical aspects of decarbonization. We actually have our architects on the line that may be able to dig a little deeper. Paul or Jesse, can you address that question? In more detail? From an architectural standpoint?
Well, as far as the audit itself, we looked for that. We looked across a lot of other agencies and a lot of other places of who's doing these energy audits and what they're asking for. And this was basically the baseline that most other places were asking what their energy audit should be like, these energy two or this ISO 5002. So, this is kind of where we got, you know, this is our baseline for the energy audit. To go back to the PNAs and the things we were getting prior, we haven't been getting really any whatsoever energy audit or any sort of evaluation for the energy at all on any of these rehab buildings or any of the PNAs. So, this was just kind of where we landed. Now, if you have different recommendations for what you guys think is an easier lift than just saying 20% less of something, if you could point to something in more specifics, then we could take a look at it and, you know, bounce it off of everybody in the office and see what we can do. But this is kind of where we landed from other jurisdictions.
So, Tracy, if you have a recommendation that you would like us to consider, we asked you to submit that either in the Q and A or to the DOH website.
Maria and Tracy, thank you for your questions and comments. I am going to open the Q and A. We have another comment from David Esposito. Double up definition, consider adding to the definition so that it includes in criteria that the name does not appear in the lease. And then, we also have an anonymous question. I may have overlooked it. Are there provisions within the QAP to support affordable home ownership development and inherent gap between development costs and purchase price?
So, the QAP actually speaks to our multifamily rental side, for the most part. Although, in the 2021 QAP, we did ask developers to consider how they might move tenants towards home ownership as part of their application process. So, if there is a way that you've had affordable rentals, if there was a way to, after your 15-year compliance period, look at considering that for home ownership, we were asking developers to provide us what that might look like in year 15. So, there is some opportunity for home ownership and from that aspect, but we would need to see how that played out in your proposal. Do you have any other raised hands? I might be missing.
No, I don't see any other hands up.
I'd like to pose a question to the development community. I asked a similar question in the 2021 round. I asked a similar question in the 2021 round. For those that have read the QAP already, do you see any barriers to submitting an application? If so, could you raise your hand and let us know what those might be?
Kirk, I see your hand up. You now have the ability to unmute yourself and state your comment.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for taking this comment. A potential barrier for any developer is developer fee caps that may not align with the scale or the size of the development.
Can you elaborate a little further?
Sure. For a standard 9% transaction, there might not necessarily be a disparity between the size of the development or the total development cost. And let's say the developer fee caps that are under the previous or, let's say, current QAP. But when we consider larger transactions, let's say 4% transactions, that would be in a 200-plus unit range, that would be more right-sized for that type of transaction. Developer fee caps under the current QAP do not align with the with the risk that the development team is encumbering to do the development.
And what do you think the disparity is?
Well, ultimately, it's a combination of the developer's risk that they are obligated to for completion guarantees for the investor, but also just the overall risk relative to the developments. So, you know, typical 4% transaction could be in the $150 million total development cost range. And if a developer fee cap of $2.5 million is in place, that's an effective developer fee of less than, and I'm guessing here, one and a half percent. And typically, an investor is going to want a developer to have more skin in the game or more teeth to be able to claw back any sort of, I guess, provision if the developer doesn't perform, and investment committee might be reluctant to be a part of a development where the developer doesn't have enough benefit that they're receiving that might equate to the risk that the investor is able to reclaim.
And on such a deal, what do you feel the development fee should be?
Well, I think it'd be a question for the broader development community, but I would say something that might be more commensurate with, let's say, Safe Harbor, HUD Safe Harbor requirements, or just developer fees that are, let's say, representative of typical developer fees we see with other agencies, not just in Illinois, but other states. And maybe a way to just conclude would be looking for parity between the development scale or size and the fee the development team is entitled to. Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Thank you. We have another anonymous comment and question in the Q and A. The draft QAP includes a monetary incentive for permanent supportive housing, PSH developments, through an increased developer fee. Has DOH considered incentivizing energy efficiency in a similar way?
I can take this. Our research indicates that the capital costs of increased energy efficiency and electrification don't tend to be substantially different from present design standards. Many of these requirements are currently captured in the new Chicago Building Code as well. So they are existing baseline requirements. There, in addition, the expectation is that there would be long-term savings that would show up in the pro forma from reduced energy use and reduced gas consumption as well. So that would contribute to long-term savings. And then there's a wide variety of new federal subsidy and tax credit programs that will impact pricing for energy-efficient building technologies as well. All that said, we certainly invite public comment about concerns about costs associated with these requirements, or any suggestions about ways that the department can mitigate those concerns.
Sharing a comment in the Q and A from David Esposito, incentivized require the inclusion of persons with experience or expertise in the development of the PSH project.
I don't see any hands up, but if you have a comment, please feel free to use the raise hand feature, and I can unmute you to provide your comment verbally.
I'm saying, let's see. Looks like we got one additional comment. And we'll give it another couple of minutes in case other people want to respond. We'll give you another two or three minutes to either take yourself off mute and ask or put your comment in the chat. Or in the Q and A, I'm sorry.
To voice over the question that is in the Q and A. The PSH project guidelines, can you please explain the reason for not including persons existing or persons exiting institutions other than correctional facilities as a priority population?
Is Ryan, can you fill out a little bit?
Yeah, I can speak to that. I our priority populations were determined in conjunction with DFSS and dumb naming some of the needs they had, as well as thinking about what populations are currently lacking access to, very affordable, like deeply affordable 30% AMI housing, and people leaving institutions other than correctional facilities, perhaps as a health institutions. There are programs that serve those people, such as they can become Williams and Culver class members. So there are some resources for those folks. So I think some of the rationale behind that is seeking to serve populations that have no way to access that deeply affordable housing. So I think that's kind of where that was coming from, as well as our conversations with DFSS and being on the same page with them.
Thank you. And of course, if you have additional comments as to how we might address that, we send that to the DOH website, a DOH2023QAP@cityofchicago.org. Unless we have any further comments or questions, I think we can conclude the meeting. Let me thank you all for coming out, for joining us for the public comment period. Please keep in mind that the public comment is still open until February 28th. You may send written comments to the DOH website that I just cited. And we are happy to continue to work with our partners to continue to provide a decent, safe and affordable housing. Thank you, everyone.